Coming to the meeting this evening. Is there any additions, deletions to the minutes? Meeting minutes? Nothing? Nothing? Good. Um.
What are, what are you folks here for?
Library. Bailey Library.
You are not on the agenda, so, okay.
Well, well.
We can, we can add you though.
Yeah, we'll get you in there.
We can add you. So, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, uh, under new business, at the end of new business, if we could add the library.
I'll second that. Alright, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Okay.
There you go.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve and accept the minutes from September tenth.
I'll second that. Any discussion around that? Very none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? There's no, um.
For you.
High way. Do you have a report for us?
Just, uh, upgrade. We're, uh, pour concrete in the truck base. This last, uh, well, spring. And now we're sealing it.
Mm-hmm.
With paint and stuff and, uh, um. With rain coming in, we're gonna start fall grading. When the rain starts coming in.
Looks like you got, looks like you got some for the rest of the week, yeah.
Yeah, so when, if you grade now, it's all fluffy, a little back in.
Oh.
About all I have.
We, I hadn't gotten any calls except for two-year-old, but that's as far as the roads are concerned.
Yeah.
So.
Cass, there's one, um, I keep on forgetting to text you. I think it's over here by, if I remember right, Teddy's, there's a pothole.
Pothole, I just saw it.
Needs some, needs some cold patch.
I'm gonna put it, put it in, I did see that, thank you.
Yep.
I'd ask for a motion to approve the, uh, minutes, support warrants, this stuff.
Oh, we don't need a motion for that, we're all set.
Alright.
So I think, that's all you had, Cash?
That's all I have.
Okay. So technically, we're down to guests, if anybody's a guest.
Anybody wanna be a guest? Library wanna be a guest? Then we can move you guys, so you don't have to sit around. Go ahead, you, just, go ahead.
Okay, I'm Linda Adams, I'm president of the Ba- Bailey Memorial Library. And we have some concerns about the cleaning contract. We were never notified that the library wasn't going to be included. And I did a little research on your minutes. The only time I found any con- I might not have gone back far enough, anything about the contract was when, um, the gentleman from the cleaning company was here on June twenty-third. He said in there that the recreation committee said that we shouldn't be included. I'm not sure what they have to do with the library, um.
I didn't, so, Kim, you were here then.
Mm-hmm.
Did we, I thought we basically re-upped the contract and left it the same.
Established, right, that's what I thought.
When we did it.
Yeah.
We've got public that was here too, I know, like, Shelley, you were here for that meeting, that was my memory of it, that we basically re-upped it as it was.
Well, we weren't included in it because we have since got a bill for them for two months, that we don't have any money in our budget. And I couldn't un- the board can't understand why we were taken out, if we were taken out. Um, because.
We'll have, we'll have to look at it, cause that's news, that's news to us too, so.
Here's the minute. And, let me see. The cleaning bed. And, um, just says in here, oh, the submissions, I don't know where that page went. Maybe I don't have that.
Yeah, that was like the end of May or early June when he was here.
Yeah, and I thought.
That was June twenty-third.
When we did it, I thought we basically said to re-up it as it was.
Yep.
But I could be wrong.
Well, he sent us a bill saying we weren't included in it for two months. I can give you copies of that bill.
One of the things.
They were excluded.
Give them, and we'll get some information out of it.
Yeah, we'll do some research.
One of the things that added to discuss that night was taking the recyclables also. At that meeting.
Yeah, the cost of it. That's when we started saying.
No, no, no. He was gonna take the recyclables to, as part of the cost of the cleaning.
Oh, I, I, I misunderstood what you're trying to say. Hmm. Yeah, I don't remember that.
Well, he says we're not included in it, and he sent us that bill for July and August.
Well, let's be proactive, Kim, about it tomorrow, and then we'll get, we can get back to you guys.
Yeah, because, I mean, we were, we're never told that we were gonna be taken out.
I don't remember what you're saying.
I, you, what do you remember, Kim? You probably remember better than.
I remember, because I drew up the contract, that they were not included.
In it?
Yeah, in it, yeah.
Okay, so we'll just need to look back and figure out what needs to be.
Upgraded.
Yeah, what we gotta look at. Okay.
Go back and listen to the Pig TV recording.
Yeah, yeah, there you go.
I didn't do that.
Cause I don't, cause I don't remember clearly that night.
And I don't remember them.
Well, cause when we were.
Talking about taking that out.
When we were having discussion with him that night, I thought we said basically, cause the, the history behind it, just in case you didn't get caught up on all of it, is we actually threatened to pull the contract completely because we were having problems in this building.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that was the history, we, we were having significant issues, um, things weren't up to snuff. And we decided to go out to bid because of that. Um, in the process of the bid process, he came in and pled his case. I believe since service has stepped up in this building, um, it's been better since, um, but my memory of it, and I, and I could be totally losing it, but my memory of it was that when we agreed to re-up, we basically, I do remember the recycling coming up, but otherwise, it was supposed to, from my perspective, stay the same, like, we weren't, we weren't changing.
Oh, definitely.
But I, I could be wrong, but that was my takeaway from it.
Well, I didn't bring a copy of his letter, I just brought a copy of the bill, um, but he said that we weren't included in it.
Can we be included now?
So you think we are gonna be included?
Let's do, yeah, we've gotta have them do some homework, and we'll try to figure it out on our end.
Try and get it done.
Let us know, please.
Yeah.
Try and, but try and get it done.
We'll try and get it straightened out.
Okay.
Uh, be, maybe before the end of this week, hopefully.
Okay.
And then.
We appreciate that, because we don't have any wiggle room in our budget.
Right.
What we ask for and you give us is what we need.
Yep.
We all set?
I think so.
Okay.
I just had homework, I'm Linda O'Brien, the library director.
Yes.
I got hired once, um, Barb retired in January. Um, I just wanted to mention that I'm not exactly clear on what the cleaning involves for the, you know, library, for the whole building. Um, so, what it looked like to us was it involved, um, vacuuming and trash removal, but maybe it's stated in the contract, so.
We did find the minutes.
We'll have to pull.
You did, what does it say?
We did find the minutes.
Okay.
It says the cleaning service was recently put out to bid, and Palfee, along with two other companies, have provided bids. The library was not included in the bid paperwork, as the chair of the recreation committee instructed it should not be.
She had said. Be John McKinnon, why would he?
No, that's, that's Sarah.
Sarah Holmes comes come.
Yeah. We need, yeah, we need to do some homework. Yep. We'll get, we'll get on it and try to get back to you by the end of the week.
Appreciate that.
Oh, that's right.
Um, hundred and fifty-two dollars for two months, two months.
Okay.
Well, good.
We'll try to figure out what's going on.
Thank you.
Work on it tomorrow, that way we.
Cause I'm, so, I guess my question.
I mean, we couldn't figure out why you wouldn't include us, because you fund us anyways.
Well, exactly, but I.
And.
Uh, we need to do some homework, I, we can have a conversation.
Yeah, I know the treasurer had some information on that, so I can.
Okay, we'll do some homework and, yeah, okay.
But, Kim, soon as we figure this out, we get in touch with the contractor and get it squared away, then we'll.
Well, yeah, it, it may require some action on our part, too.
Exactly.
We'll figure, we'll figure it out.
He did what he was told.
Yeah, exactly, cause it sounds like he did what he was told, so we need to, we need to get to the bottom of it.
If you hadn't included us, he shouldn't have been cleaning us those two months.
Well, well, the, you say, you're saying you got a bill for July and August?
Yes.
The contract starts July first.
Right, but he shouldn't have been cleaning us if we weren't included in that contract.
That's right, I see.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
I see your point, yeah.
Yes, I see what you're saying.
If we need to write a letter to him to tell him that.
Okay.
We can do that.
That's good information.
Yeah, no, that's a good point, yep.
But, I hope we're included.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, I just, I'm gonna reply, say thank you.
Yeah.
Worst-case scenario, we'll invite him back to the, to our, the next meeting.
Okay, well, if you need me to come back, let me know.
Yeah, okay, thank you for making us aware.
Okay.
Okay.
Hopefully, we'll get it squared away. That's Marine Corps talk. Square it away.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I, I'm Kate Taylor, I'm on the library board, I just joined, and I just wanna say, what a beautiful, beautiful library this has become. And if you have any, any need to see it, to see how we need the cleaning, I mean, it, it's neat as a pin, it doesn't need cleaning all the time, but it would sure be nice to be included.
The, uh, Kim and I went down there when the young lady was painting the walls and stuff. So, we're gonna paint here sooner or later, and we were figuring we'd put a mural up over here.
Oh, yes, cool.
Yes, like they have Gloria with the remaining gallon that we had, of the same slow green color it's called.
Yeah. It looked pretty nice.
It's very sophisticated, yeah.
Thanks very much.
We'll get back to you.
And thank you for all your support, too.
Yes.
Library appreciates it, and I will be leaving off library card applications for all the members. We, we wrote George into it, so.
I've got one from a bunch of years ago.
I'll send you one. Thank you.
Want to talk?
Yeah.
Have this here?
Public comment.
Yeah, on public comment, uh, any public comments from the sitting public? If not, I would like to have you guys, so you don't have to stick around here all night long, uh, discuss about the dog issue? And what's taken place since then?
Uh, yep, so, uh, I've heard some conversations with the owner by Deputy Sweet.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the animal in question, uh, has been surrendered over to the Humane Society, um, it is out of town.
The one that bit did not get taken away. The one that did the biting is here, at the residence.
Okay, then I, I, I'll let you, cause I, the way I read was that that one was surrendered.
Okay, so, the, my involvement started, uh, back in beginning of August, I think it was, it was an incident, somebody got knocked off a bike.
Yeah.
No injuries, he said the dogs did not seem aggressive, they just seemed like they wanted to play and chase. Um, I'd been trying for weeks to get ahold of him, no contact by phone, he was never home. I happened to stop last week, he was there, we had the, the discussion, um, and I went saw the one dog. I came down here and found out there was a whole nother incident when I was on vacation, that I was not up to speed on. So, after discussing with the lieutenant and people here, I went back up, told him that he had.
Ten days?
Ten days, he had to quarantine the dog for ten days, he had one week from Wednesday to get down here, get all his paperwork into you guys, uh, to prove the vaccinations, all the rabies stuff. Um, he said he understood, and he had planned on being here tonight. And, but the dog that's, that did the biting is still there.
No.
Is that the brown dog?
The one that's there now is kind of a yellowish dog, the other one was the darker one.
That's the one that, a friend of mine went through bicycle, actually pepper sprayed him, three weeks prior, that dog went after him on his bike, and then he week or so ago, he pepper sprayed him.
No, don't, because I'm gonna ask, because I'm not gonna ride my bike here now.
So this is, this is on Mill Road, correct?
Yes, yes.
So the dog was quarantined for ten days?
Uh, it's, he was supposed to have, um, I can't say for sure.
I got a call today from, uh, the town clerk, she advised that he had come in, he didn't have the paperwork, because the dog was still in the ten-day quarantine, so he couldn't take it to the vet to get everything up to bring the paperwork in. So, it is.
He had originally said that he had all the paperwork, he had, the dog had all its shots, and, so.
My dad had to go through the whole series of rabies shots.
You were the one that was bit?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, but that, that happened.
The comment I'd like to make, he, the big dog that bit me, had been there for a long time, and I go out in the mailbox, he never left the yard. Then he got this little younger one, and that one was very aggressive, and after a few days, the bigger dog started following him, and I think he was, when I reached for the mailbox with this thing on my hand, I think he felt he was protecting the little one, cause it didn't, uh, the big dog, I think, is okay.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I mean, it just seemed weird that they, cause he said he'd had the dog for a long time, that we'd never had anything up until the first one, the beginning of August. Um, and like I said, the guy that was riding the bicycle got knocked down, he said, I don't think they wanted, they, they didn't seem aggressive, they just seemed like they wanted to chase and play, so.
Well, they have been.
They've been very aggressive since the little one's there, but, like I say, the big dog, I always looked up, and I thought, great, he sat there on the corner of the lawn, never left like, almost like he, an electric type fence.
Right.
So, but the little one, once he got there, at first it was just the little one, then he started joining in, and it got to the point where if I come off my porch, the two dogs were there, like, they're gonna eat me up.
And my dad has a very, pretty long driveway, so they traveled quite a bit to get to the porch.
But, he's never contacted me, I don't know whether he has insurance or not, but, uh, one way or the other. But he, he wanted to come in and get a license.
That's not unreasonable to ask.
But no, as far as the big dog goes, I'm okay with that. Upgrade the license, and Gloria said, well, you have to show all the shots and stuff to the dog, but you, then in, in the conversation, I didn't hear it myself, but according to Gloria, uh, but it's still in a ten-day, so that's what keeps him from taking the dog to the vet.
Right, which would lead me to believe that he did not have that stuff taken care of originally.
I would see that.
Cause he would have the paperwork on him.
Right, I would agree with that.
I would agree with that.
Well, we were told, that's why he had to go through the shots, is he hasn't had his rabies shots for five years.
He told the deputy that.
That's, yeah, I believe in that Deputy Sweet Junior's report was that they had expired two years prior. So he did previously have the shots, but they were significantly expired.
Yep.
Cause I believe they're good for, what, three years now?
Usually.
Yeah, so five years.
The main thing when Deputy Sweet was there, I wouldn't find her vaccinated or not, I didn't wanna go through what I've gone through the last three weeks.
So, the one dog has left town, is what you're saying?
The little dog.
Yes.
But not the dog that actually committed the action, is what we're under the understanding of. So, the board has to make a decision to have a vicious dog hearing, which we can schedule tonight, and then pursue the action of well, there's two actions that can be taken. And at least, since I've been here, we, that's what we've had at our table.
Well, there, there's, it, it's really up to the board what actions you choose to take, um, you know, I have seen where the board required that if the animal is outside, it is either controlled by leash, or it is in a completely fenced-in enclosure, like a kennel.
Yep.
Which, in our last one, that's where it started.
Yep.
That, in that case, that didn't get followed.
And then we, then we took further action.
To the second hearing.
Across from your house, that, that person that lived in a trailer, remembers, she had all those dogs, we had, finally put them down. So, that wasn't very fun, but.
So, I mean, you, so, by this Wednesday, town paperwork's supposed to be completed, that's the first step, based on what's been issued?
By this Wednesday, it should be out of the ten days, he should be able to get it to the vet, get it up to speed, and come in and get it registered with proper paperwork.
Okay, okay. And I guess the question is, um, because we have individuals here who have been impacted, are you, are you requesting us to pursue vicious dog?
No, if they got rid of the little one, the big one, I think is fine, even if he did have breakfast with me.
So, I, I can't say that, you know, and I know it's not a lot, but within the realm of our authority, we have issued ordinance violations for the dogs being at large, or anything else, we're staying on top of the follow-through on, if they don't get registered, there will be the penalties on top of that, um.
Is there going to, so, is there going to be a thing where he's gonna have to put up a fence, he's gonna have to do something?
So. That's my, that's my next step.
My dad can go to the mailbox?
The, the big dog, it didn't bother me.
That, that would require the board to have a hearing, issue an order.
Okay.
And, and go through with that.
And then my.
I can't say there is not a timeline per se with that, it doesn't.
So do we, so I guess my question is, do we have to have a hearing for that step, or can we issue an order tonight that the dog needs to be contained?
Well, it's already in your ordinance, says the dog has to be, there's a leash law.
Correct, but this is taking it a step further, if we're gonna demand a fence, that's taking it a step further.
Leash law is that it's either under control of physical leash or control of verbal commands, is generally in. What this states is that, and what has been done in the past, is that anytime the animal is not contained inside the residence, it will be on a leash or in a secured fenced-in enclosure, which, and at that point, there are additional financial penalties that would be available to the board through civil routes, and it, it leads into the next step, if it continues to be violated, then it, it would lead to the next step.
If there was another violation, it sets us up that we could make a significant war.
I think you got rid of the problem getting rid of the other dog.
But, so back to my question, do we have to have a hearing for that step, or could we issue that tonight?
I have the VLCT model of dog control ordinance.
Cause, cause I know we have to have a hearing before we order destruction.
Correct.
Like, that, that's a given, we know that for sure, but I guess my question is, do we have to have a hearing to order a con- confinement structure and the whole?
My understanding of the statutes is that would need to come out of a notice hearing, yes.
Okay.
And, I, I have a question regarding, um, so, would like insurance and things like that, cause years ago, I had an issue with my dog. And, so I want to know what needs to happen, or how do we find out who his homeowner's insurance is, to be able to have my dad's insurance, who's covering all of these bills?
Yeah.
Um, for all these shots and emergency room visits and stuff, how does that happen?
So, you guys could correct me, but I believe that's gonna be considered a civil matter, that you would have to retain counsel.
Okay.
So, what, what could be done is, I mean, there's obviously town records, so you can get the address, find out who the owner of the residence is, provide that information to the medical insurance company, they could then pursue any legal action on them. If he has out-of-pocket expenses, he can take that, say, and either have a face-to-face conversation and say, hey, here's a copy of my bills, and a lot of times in these, the people do just come out and pay them, cause they feel bad that it happened, but, um, if it was challenged, then it would have to be filed in a small claims court.
I do know, if, I don't know how much it matters, but when I mentioned a dog bite, he kept saying alleged. So, I don't know what, how that's gonna go with your hearing, because it doesn't sound like, he's like, oh yeah, my dog, he's like alleged, almost like he doesn't believe it. So, just so, just, just as a heads up.
Did I say something?
Sure.
When the dog bit me, I was bleeding pretty bad, I ran in the house, wrapped a towel around it, got my truck, drove across the road, and laid on the horn to let him know. Well, by the time I got back out, the dogs were gone, and he was, his car was there, and he was still home, but he wouldn't come the door.
And then I wanna say he did make a statement that he had left the dogs out and was in the shower.
Right.
When.
Told that to your deputy, I think.
Yeah.
So that's gonna be something you guys have to discuss at your meeting.
Time fell at the same time this happened.
Sounds like you went and saw a alleged doctor. Who gave you a little treatment. Here's a good lawyer right there.
Well, the clock is, so considering, um, the complaint is filed here as of tonight, we have a calendar deadline here that we have to meet as well, so, um, for a hearing, so, um.
And a hearing has to be worn no less than thirty days. So we have thirty, we have thirty days, I think, to, to warn, it has to be published in the newspaper.
The hearing could be no sooner than thirty days.
No sooner, that's what I meant, yeah. No sooner than thirty, no later than forty.
Put down over here as far as a complaint or anything?
No, he didn't.
Okay.
He just pepper sprayed him, and then the owner said to, well, the dog deserved it.
Do you know how long ago that was?
About a week and a half ago.
Oh, okay, to have him come in and.
I can get a.
Talk to somebody here, that way it helps you guys, there's three incidents. Did he say which dog it was?
I think he said the bigger one, the brown one, cause I was actually, I fixed the driveway up there, mailboxes, across the road, almost to your place. And when I put my road signs up, it was fine, but when I went to pick them up, that dog actually started coming down the road at me.
Both dogs, or just? Did you have both dogs?
The yellow, yellows dog started coming down through, the black one kinda hung back a little bit. And kinda, I was like, I can handle dogs pretty well, but, I was like, I was on guard.
So, do I need, I, I had sent Gloria a picture of the bite wound.
Yes.
Do you need a copy of that, or you've already seen it?
I've seen it.
Okay.
She still has the copy?
She has a copy.
She does.
Okay.
Did you ever see it?
I saw it just after.
Yeah. You seen that?
Um, no, I heard about it, but.
It was pretty nasty.
I have it on my phone, if you'd like, but, that's up to you.
Yes.
Cause this one, this, cause this one, Kim says seven days.
Right, I thought that was different.
Yeah. Look at that dog. That's a good one, yeah. It's nasty. That's a bad one. Did they have to stitch that up, too?
They left it open, cause of the high risk of infection, and they wanted to continue to drink.
Well, they'd taken the skin around to, couldn't tell it anyway, but, they took what the dog, or animal bite infected.
Oh, this is a sam- this is just a sample, that's all this is, this is if a town's adopting, which we have one.
No, right, right.
We, we have one in the, in the.
We have our own dog.
We have our own, in the, um, ordinance book.
Got that after the, the people that lived in the trailer.
That's VLCT, isn't it?
Well, it's, it's got a bunch of stuff in there, I looked through it earlier this evening.
Okay, yeah, no, we, in our ordinance book, we have.
They're probably, it's like.
We have this one right here.
Did you see this picture?
I did.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, they showed me when I came down, and I, and I, cause they asked me about the dog bite, I said, I don't know what you're talking about.
Oh, yeah, I did include stuff there.
He just knocked the guy off the bike, and they're like, what? It was a different, a completely different situation.
Yeah.
So, that's how I, yeah, that's how I found out about it, cause she showed me that.
For UPS for thirty-six years, so I have a healthy respect of friggin' dogs, I like them.
Yep.
Yeah. My, um, I wanna say this in public.
Then you probably should.
You better not.
Then you probably should. Uh.
Motion on video.
Yeah. It's in here somewhere.
What's the, uh?
It's the seven days. It's on the second, to the last.
Within seven days.
We, we shall initiate proceedings.
So within seven days of the complaint, we shall investigate and hold a hearing. So we need to set a meeting tonight.
For a hearing?
Set a hearing. Because this can't act as our hearing, we didn't warn, it wasn't warned as a hearing, so we gotta.
That's generally been the understanding in my experience with these, is that once you get the report, it initiates it, the individuals are notified to come in to discuss it, whether there's a hearing or not, and then they give that warning of the following hearing, because they do need to have due ti- due notice of a hearing, they need to have time to prepare any defense, you know, to, to do it properly, so that's the way that all of these that I've been involved in have always proceeded.
Yep.
The session that speaks directly to that, that you just looked at?
Mm-hmm.
Let's make some copies of that.
Well, it's.
You all have a copy.
No, 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 I mean, not for us, for a handout to this guy, tell him this is what protocol is, and so we're gonna have to schedule a hearing, one way or the other.
So I would say you're, um, if we consider seven days from tonight, your next Monday. If you do it that way, and that way, our other board member will be back, yeah.
I won't be here, but.
You won't be here Monday?
I won't be here either, Monday?
Monday?
I won't be, I'm leaving.
I can go on forward.
What about, um, the rest of the, um, if we're gonna do something this week? No?
Does it have to be scheduled and held at seven days, or it can be scheduled within that seven days for?
Has to be warned for seven days, right?
Well, it says within seven days to still investigate the charges, hold a hearing. I mean...
Per receipt.
We already investigated you guys in the town.
I was gonna say, it's been investigated, technically.
And, and that's the timeline we hold on. Once it's investigated...
You investigate it within seven days.
Within seven days, we get the copy to you, and then at that point, that would initiate any proceedings.
Okay.
Um...
Okay.
Because you're right, it does have to be warned out as far as a meeting, so...
Are you, are you out a- a- all next week?
Yes.
Same with you?
I will be until October fifth.
Okay, it's a Tuesday, right, I think?
No, that's Sunday.
It's on Sunday.
So how did we, how did the board come up with that seven-day timeframe if in general hearings are supposed to be warned for thirty days?
That's, general across the board, that's a fairly standard language and timeline based upon some of the state statutes in there. And i- it's always kinda been that issue between appropriate warning of a public meeting as opposed to what the state statute says.
Taking care of the situation.
In, in the past, it has always been as long as the proceedings have been initiated within the timeframe. Obviously, there are appropriate steps that need to be taken.
Okay.
Under open meeting laws, things like that, where it has to be warned out, and things of that nature.
Okay.
So theoretically, if there's a thirty-day, I mean, there's a seven-day issue, but if there's thirty days to promote or project...
Well, that's, my take on that is, I think you've got thirty days on most of your other stuff, but not, I mean, they... The other thing is town ordinance in this case, because it's a local matter, trumps basically, i- if we say fifteen days or fourteen days or whatever, it kinda trumps what, otherwise. So, um, based on what I'm hearing, we probably should schedule this for right off the bat when you guys get back. Um, which would be like October seventh.
The seventh, uh...
No.
I'm, I'm back on the eleventh. Leave the twenty-ninth, I'm gonna do the eleventh.
I mean, if we do it with one, one missing, that's not a, that's not a huge deal.
Worst-case scenario, I'd be on the fourth.
Okay. Um, but I, I would say we need to, especially since there's two or three incidents, we need to get this under control.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I mean, based on what it sounds like, I know we can't pass any judgments here tonight, but it sounds like a confinement structure is the next logical step before probably destruction. But that's the ro- I mean, we wanna take the proper steps to do what needs to be done in the case. That's what I would say.
It's ironic, cause I haven't seen that dog out in the last few days. Anytime I go by, you see him.
Oh, you are looking.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Um...
What day are you looking at?
Well, that's, so you, you are back for the seventh?
Yes.
And I know George is back for the seventh.
That's a Tuesday.
That is a Tuesday.
The sixth on a Monday.
Yeah, just a minute, um...
What's the time you'll be back on?
The eleventh.
That's why, yeah, that's a whole nother week away.
We'll have nothing going on around on the Tuesday, do we?
No. Uh, I could do the seventh, based on what I'm seeing.
Tuesday.
That's, that's the, uh, yeah, that's the Tuesday.
I have a big overnight thing up at Lake Maury with the vet's on.
When's that?
Um, trying to, thinking it's the second Wednesday.
Oh, that's not for a while then.
Well, no, that's right then.
The second Wednesday?
That's Tuesday, Wednesday of that week then.
Yeah. So...
So here's the other, here's the other option, because action's already been taken on the part of the sheriff's department. Do you just wanna do it at five-thirty before the meeting on the thirteenth? That's our next meeting.
Yeah.
Why not?
And you could just do it at five-thirty right before this meeting, and have a half-hour hearing, and we go right into the meeting.
Yeah.
Sounds like playing.
That'd work for me.
We always schedule that kind of stuff when we're doing budgets and stuff.
That's, that's fine.
So it makes sense.
So I'll make a motion that we officially, uh, schedule and war- properly warn and notify the owner uh, of a vicious dog hearing to be held at five-thirty on October thirteenth.
What's I gonna, Cash, you second it?
Any favor of the motion? Do you wanna have the sheriffs down here?
Well, I assume you guys would.
Yeah, you guys will be here.
We'll make sure that, that, me and all deputies are here.
Yeah.
All right, so all of the favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? I don't hear that, so...
Okay.
We gotta clear it up, you guys. We'll email or call or whatever if anything changes.
Absolutely.
Then we'll throw a reminder down your direction.
Sounds good.
Carry on, man.
Thank you very much.
Hi, thank you.
All right, new business, board approval of draft minutes. August twenty-fourth.
All right, so Little Road, where do I not wanna be on my bicycle?
Yeah.
This brings up a good point. The kids are running down the road. The damn school sending those track kids down the road again.
Yep.
They're coming this way now.
Mm-hmm, they are.
And it's... Are they coming down this far?
I've seen them. They come down here and turn around, right here.
Oh, really?
And back up, and, you know, somebody up there oughta have a little bit more brain than that, send the kid out. Take the risk, somebody's gonna hit him.
And they have a tendency to run in a group.
I was gonna call the school myself, and I see that's, that's just putting people at risk.
Yeah.
The driver and the children.
I don't know why they can't run behind the school itself around the football field.
Right.
Well, it gives them a little change, you know, it's, gives them a little change scenery.
Yeah.
You know?
Well, we have that field that...
They've always run on the middle road, you know, they've run up, run up by my parents' house.
But then they get the field that, uh, climb down military that they all field that.
If they have a path around that, why don't they run around that?
So I think just the question is, is it the north, are we talking north end of Middle Road? Are we talking Middle Road Central? Where are we talking?
Where's this?
For what we just discussed.
This dog?
Down here.
Blow Eddie Baker's place.
Up here.
Yeah, just up the road.
Okay.
Right across, right across Eddie Pratt's.
At Eddie's house, right? He went out to get his mail he's at.
Right across the road, but they... There's that yellow house with the pickups.
Blair's old house.
He's back from the road a little bit, right?
He's Tommy Blair's old house up there, and it's their dogs.
So just above Ed's?
South, this side.
Two houses down.
Oh, this, two houses down.
He has a, he has a pickup back that Nixon Road.
The house that's sold, that's got new owners on it.
Yeah, they did, they rebuilt it. It's up there worth a lot of well.
It's got new owners from West Row.
That eighth house. Just the house where the pickup there back there.
With the kinda garage in the back?
Yeah, they kinda cleaned up all the, the cars up back.
Okay.
Two houses.
Okay, okay.
I don't drive, I'm...
All right. All right, so it's, so it's on the, from Walker Mountain North?
Yeah.
Okay.
About eighth mile out.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, new business, board approval of draft minutes, uh, of Monday, August twenty-fourth.
It has to remain as a draft. But it should be approved and officially put in the book, is what George felt.
Ironically enough, it's our last dog hearing.
Yeah.
It was never approved.
Yes, that's how we found it when we were researching.
Doggy stuff?
So it can be a...
Well, I'll, I'll make a motion, I was here for it, so I'll make a motion that we go ahead and approve, and Cash, you were here for it too. So I would make a motion that we approve it and have the clerk sign it.
Bob, were you still on then?
Yes, he was.
Yeah.
But there's three of us, because Cash was on by that point.
Yeah.
So we, the three of us can vote on it.
Do I, do I have steam from that?
You, yeah, you weren't here, so probably it would be wise. It's, you wanna look at it, Cash? It's, it's just the hearing notice, or minutes.
Yeah, take a look at this. So there's a motion made. Did anybody second it?
No.
You need Cash to second it.
I'll second, yeah.
Wanna move the motion, or you wanna look at that first?
He seconded it, yeah.
Okay, all of the favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And...
And for the, for the record, Donnie recused himself.
Yep. Um, town officers and committee member reports, do you have anything? Both from, uh, seventh committee and... All right, do you have anything, young lady?
Uh, the town treasurer did include the budget status report with the general, all the funds, and she didn't have anything to report on that, although she did say that in that you can see the budgets of the recreation committee and the community center and the library. And sh- she did provide to me that it was a mistype. It's not the recreation committee that should have been deciding on the cleaning contract. It's up to the community center committee. And they had decided not to include it.
The community center decided, you're saying, Kim?
Okay, so, we got Bob here, so maybe we should look back to this discussion then. So, you're saying that that's a typo, ultimately?
It was a typo. It was just a typo.
And that the community center recommended to us to not include it?
To not include it, and that the library is their own entity and they have their own budget. They receive almost forty thousand from the town to help them operate.
I believe that's the way it was, and I mean...
So you guys had been paying for it, and you opted to not anymore?
Right.
Okay, now the picture's clear.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
I was so confused by it, so I was like, okay.
So...
So there's a typo in the minutes, okay?
They, they had come in here to the town office and spoke with me, and they were directed to talk to the community center committee. And that's why I didn't include them on the agenda, because they were going to talk with them first.
The cleaners.
Okay, so, in that case, my recommendation is that a board member or two have a conversation with Matt, and maybe he can roundtable with some of the community center and find out where we're at here. Must be. I, I...
He did.
My, my brain is a little foggy from that time, so...
I remember Matt bringing it up, that was, be something.
So, the conversation that we just had with the library?
I don't remember that.
Is that we would look into it because...
So what was the thing, it was being cut? I'd remember that, for sure.
It's information that I've gathered since they have left, yes, unfortunately.
All right.
Yeah, boy, Bob, you sound, you were quiet as a church mosque back then.
He would've been ganged up on.
So I don't, I just don't remember that.
Technically, I don't remember hearing that.
I usually have a pretty good memory when it comes to our meetings, but I don't remember that.
I don't have a good memory.
I need to ask a question though, how, how's the community center and the library?
The building is the library.
Because it's in the building.
Okay.
So...
But who basically gets to be the general manager of the library, community center? Who's, who's the top dog?
The community center technically is over the building. That, I mean, that's my understanding, cause the community center board has always made decisions when it comes to maintenance, when it comes to if you got renovations or repairs. That's been you guys, right?
On the whole building.
Yeah.
Unless something serious, serious, and then of course, we'd have to talk to you people.
So, I, she said that it was a hundred and fifty bucks for two months?
I have the bills. Hundred and fifty-two dollars for two months, yeah.
You're talking a thousand bucks that you gotta come up, figure out.
No, it's only nine hundred. Right?
Did I do that wrong?
Hundred and fifty dollars for two months.
Correct, so...
So that's nine hundred and twelve dollars.
Nine hundred bucks.
Okay, you're doing for the year.
For the year, is what we're talking.
How did you guys, uh, did, were you part of that conversation, Bob?
Yeah, I think we had it back when we were doing budget.
So all the way back last November?
Yeah, and then we said, uh, it was gonna be taken out, the library was gonna be taken out of the cleaning bill.
I wish I would've remembered that, because then when we had the conversation and the approach from the library for a budget, we could have reconfigured what...
No, because we, we paid the, the, community paid the light bill, if I'm correct.
So it was a budget time discussion?
Yeah, I believe it was a, budget, uh, I'd have, I will try and get ahold of Matt and see if I can get a copy of the minute. Parker Gloria's got it right here. Copy of the minutes when that was done.
In your meeting.
But either way, there's a glitch in ours, because it shouldn't, it shouldn't say wreck.
It should've said community center.
Community center minutes.
Yeah.
Which, I guess my question is, those minutes have been approved and logged.
Mm-hmm.
Can we technically correct it now, or is that too late?
I'll have to look it, I'll look it up.
Cause if we can correct them, we probably should.
We probably should, yeah.
Just so that we're accurate.
I would think you could.
Did you talk with Matt and ask him to stop in here and have a conversation during the week with Kim and Heidi?
Yeah, if I never catch up with him. He's on the go all the time, but yeah, I'll see if I can get ahold of him and...
If you can't, give me a call, and then maybe I can try and...
What's that?
If you can't, give me a call, and maybe I can try and get ahold of him.
Yeah, yeah, I'll try and give him a call tomorrow.
Okay.
So, either way, we need to probably continue this discussion and have a little bit of a plan in place, because there's nine hundred dollars that's gotta come from somewhere. Is the issue. So...
And I don't wanna really talk about money and Heidi's here.
Why is he still working there?
Well, that's a separate issue. Yeah, I agree.
And obviously, there wasn't very good communication with the library folks that this was happening.
Right.
Correct.
From the community center.
Mm-hmm.
Because if it's as simple as nine hundred bucks should've been transferred basically into their budget to cover it. I mean, the thing is, from my perspective, the town taxpayers are funding both entities.
Yeah.
Because we're funding the community center and we're funding the library.
Yeah.
So, either way, the taxpayers are paying for it.
Yeah, bottom line is...
Bottom line, it's coming out of the taxpayers.
Right.
So, i- if it's, you know, basically, we, we missed a step here, and it should've come out of the community center budget and should've been put in their budget to make it whole. I mean, that's, that's, that's the question, right?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
That's what it comes down to, but, but no, so here's where I'm going. The problem is, and, and yes, this is a treasurer question, where's the nine hundred dollars gonna come from now? Cause it's not in the community center budget.
Is that Matt's phone number?
I don't know. I, I wouldn't put him on the phone now, anyway. Let, let Bob chase him, um, tomorrow. But what I was gonna say is, whether it comes out of our contingency fund, whether it comes out of whatever, you gotta pay nine hundred bucks for, to get it covered for the next, till next June thirty. That's the issue. And, and this time around, um, when budgets come in, we can keep it in mind when we're considering their budget. Uh, I remember we were tight last year, and we cut some budget stuff. And I would have to go back and look, and I know we cut some of their requests, I think.
We cut a lot of it.
Um...
Not from them, but...
Well, around town. We cut, we cut from different things. Um, but we also, you guys, I think, level funded, I think, when you came to us. I think, if I remember right, I think basically it stayed the same. So...
But if the contract didn't include the cleaning, why is it even being done?
Why are they going if the contract wasn't signed?
Yeah. And do we need nine hundred and twelve dollars if we don't want them to continue doing it?
Correct. Correct.
It would just be to cover the bills thus far.
Um... So I think a conversation, I guess my thing is, first conversation has to be with Matt, and go from there. Um, and yes, communication with them that we're not, you know, doing whatever.
Just when you talk with Matt, ask him if he's gonna be available anytime this week, just to come down and, uh...
I, I can contact him myself.
I was gonna say, Kim can have a conversation with him.
Yeah, I'll have him stop in.
And then, uh, I'm sure between the conversation between Kim and Heidi, they'll come up with a...
Solution, hopefully.
Come up with something.
Yeah.
Figure it out somewhere.[1785.81]
Um. Does it, just out of curiosity, does it say what they're doing on that, does it say what they're doing for service? I mean, I'm sure vacuuming, I'm sure trash, but does it, is that it, is that all that they're doing up there?
Um.
At the same time they come to the
Yes, vacuuming, cleaning the bathrooms.
Okay. But bathrooms are on your end, probably.
Yeah.
Yes.
Cause they don't have their own in there, do they?
No.
What's that?
They don't have their own bathroom in there, do they?
Well, well, just the two that are there.
The two by the elevator?
Yeah. And that's it?
So it's, it's taking out the trash and vacuuming, like
The two of their public, you know?
Okay, keep us, I guess keep us in the loop. And we'll
All right, the, uh, moving right along, kinda. Um, declaring the board of selectmen meeting, the regular meeting for Wednesday, September tenth, twenty twenty-five, we looking for approval on that.
We did, at the beginning.
No, there was another
We did that, we did both of them.
Oh, I knew
So you're good to sign that one if you have it?
I signed it already.
Okay, yeah, so George, when he gets back, will have to sign it.
But I just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
Seeing as we're sitting here. What's this other stuff you have here from Mike's?
So that's all dog stuff, we already did that.
Okay.
You're good.
Old business, anything?
The only thing that I would just comment, cause I know we were technically at town officer's report, is everybody should be, uh, in my opinion, glancing at and pleased with where the transfer station is at. Just as a, continues to be more along the lines of where we needed it to be.
Kim, did George want to get involved with a, a conversation here tonight?
It was mentioned, but there's
It's one we already had, isn't it?
But he, he thought you
Oh, the transfer station was not, he was just gonna be a part of the
Oh.
Earlier, if, if we had a chance to call him.
But it was the dog stuff, right?
It was the dog stuff.
Which is all over.
Which is done.
You can update him, cause I'm sure you'll get a phone call. Um. Kim, do you have anything else?
No, that was it.
Okay. All right, Cash, you have any concerns?
I'm all set.
Me too.
I'm all set.
No concerns, Mr. Chairman.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second? Second to by
Yes, all in favor of motion? Aye.
Anyone opposed?